Before we get into the transition zone amendments, I want to just quickly go over a couple of things. First, the rules. So the only thing I was hoping to modify would be after the Chair presents the amendment, reads in the amendment or the package motion, and then we get a second, and then the Chair speaks to the motion that we, if staff has already looked at that issue and spent time on it, just like the working group has, if they have a comment, that we give staff a chance to just brief us up on it. Is there any opposition to that? Is there any, how about three minutes or five minutes? Either, preferably three, up to five, no more than five. Does that sound good? Second, it's, let's see, it is, it is 5:45 right now. We're going to take a break for dinner at 7:30. And I believe Andrew has some arrangements. Is that true? Okay. All right. So those two things to discuss. Any other discussion items before we jump right in? Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
So we are picking out the definite item eight from item nine under the Transition Working Group. And if you can pull up Exhibit TWT-5. This one, we voted on, we had a four to one vote on this. So many of us have heard, and I'll read in the amendment while we're pulling up the exhibit.
Just one amendment?
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yes, I was thinking about ways to package these, and given that we had some mixed viewpoints on these within the working group, I think probably these commissioners might want to speak to this item. So the Amendment number nine. It's pretty simple. It's map transition areas near dedicated parkland when accessible sidewalks and public safety infrastructure or pedestrian safety exist. Basically, if we have accessible sidewalks and pedestrian access, the idea there is we should build up additional housing around the city resources. So this would be kind of where we would bring the housing to the parks as opposed to bringing the parks to the housing. So just as you can see, this is the park deficiency area map. We have a lot of areas that still are deficient. So the idea there is perhaps this wouldn't eliminate that, but it would at least build more housing near our existing parks and ensure that as we build our population density, we have more people within that quarter mile distance from the parklands. So it'll help with that metric. So that's the motion.
Okay, is there a second? Who else is in that group? Second by Commissioner Seeger. Did you want to speak to that?
No, to keep things moving, I'll defer.
I appreciate that. Does staff have a comment on that?
Hi, Lacey Patterson, Planning and Zoning. Staff is not opposed to this. We're not quite sure what the impact of this might be at this time, but we're certainly open to looking further into this.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, we can jump into questions. You can address questions to staff or to another commissioner or to the working group. Please try not to comment and instead just ask a question. Any questions? Commissioner Shea.
So I'll have to kind of state it in a question. So does this pertain to, when he says parkland, does that pertain to specifically park land? Like if there was parkland dedication or somebody's development? Or are we actually talking about true parks, like city parks? And I think that's something that we do need to clarify because some of these could be just pocket parks that a developer put in as parkland dedication, and that could change, especially if it's type of easement type. So I think that we should, you know, does this pertain to that? Or are we talking about like larger neighborhood parks?
Is that addressed?
Sure. I mean, it's to the working group or, I mean, I'm on the, but I mean, I had more thoughts.
So quickly, definitely dedicated parkland, I would say private parkland. I would probably want staff to speak to what guarantee we have that that parkland will remain in place over time. Not quite sure on private parkland, but I didn't really have a certain size of park in mind. It's just a general high-level statement, direction to staff, trying to keep in mind, we're trying to keep these intents pretty high level, so.
Okay. But was the intent more major parks, ones that, was that the intent? Or was it like even a little playscape that somebody put in? I guess I want to make sure that we kind of head toward that clarification.
As you know, we really didn't have that discussion on size, but I think you're right. There might be a size that this really wouldn't be a good idea if it's too small. Bill Dentson, you're on.
Thanks.
Chair. I'm curious if there's a chance to clean up this and just kind of make it more about intent. And I definitely want to question this part to you. And I almost feel like some of this language about sidewalks is going to hold housing hostage to sidewalks. So does any part of the sidewalks have to be here? Or is the goal to have more housing near our greatest asset of parks?
Sure. I just, I think I would rather have that discussion when we were in working group instead of now. You voted for this, so I would say as we, staff has kind of looked at parking and looked at what they define as disruptive and kind of that connection between safe access to the sidewalk and building up the density. I think similarly, that was the thinking when we did this, is we really needed to make sure there's safe access to the parks. Yeah, I mean, that was the discussion we had in our work group.
And that's okay. I mean, Commissioner Anderson can amend it if we need to. Any other questions? Commissioner Zar.
I had a question for staff, and I know, Ms. Patterson, you said you have, of course, not mapped this, so you cannot know what it looks like. But can you all give us some understanding of what tying it to pedestrian infrastructure might do? We know that that might just, like, how limiting would that be as a factor? And again, this might be a hard question to answer because you do not have the data in front of you.
So I guess Brent Lloyd with the LDC team. I guess one, just point of clarification, and I apologize if I missed this in the discussion, but would the, is the intent of T9 essentially potentially be to expand transition areas or more, or limit the mapping of them to areas that meet these criteria? What exactly is, would this be another criteria for mapping that's kind of on par with the other criteria?
I think it's the latter. I think it's missing middle housing near parks. But I'll let Commissioner Shaw speak to that.
That's true. I think what we saw is in some of the high opportunity areas, we saw one criteria was where there are bus routes. This might be something we could consider for those high opportunity areas, vulnerable areas. I know I would look at, that may be something we need to talk about. But definitely, there's certain areas of the city that this might be another, a good idea for finding places to place those transition area zones R4 perhaps around a park.
Okay, well, I think you're going to find as we start to dialogue with you more that some of your recommendations we're going to have definitive answers for, and others are going to be more in the nature of, we'll look at this, we think there's merit to it, but we really need to consider how it would apply. This one is in that category, especially with that clarification as we start to look at high opportunity areas and the unique considerations that apply towards revising the maps. I think this potentially has a lot of merit, but I think we can't really speak definitively to it at this time.
Thank you. Did you want to say something as well to that question?
Scott Grantham, Parks and Recreation. I might just add that we would look for access through the new developments to the parks so that those, not only would those new plans be the benefits, but then the neighborhoods beyond as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hempel.
A question about if this only applies to existing parks or parkland, what happens with future parks that come online? Would that trigger a new transition zone?
That's a good question. I would say that could happen in a number of other ways, like if they add a high frequency bus route in the future through a high opportunity street. I mean, are we going to go upzone those certain areas of that bus route? I think that's a good question, and I really don't know. I would kind of leave it at staff, how they handle future changes that may warrant changes in our zoning.
I would like to add to that, that I believe that this process is the initial zoning of the zoning map, and we are not introducing future rezoning potentials on a broader scale as part of this process.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, let's go into getting for and against. Is there a Commissioner against?
Chairman Amendment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to just offer some clarification amendment here based on some of the comments that just says, insert the word additional. So it is map additional transition areas near dedicated parkland, and then I'd like to insert of substantial size so that we're not talking about pocket parks.
Did you also want to clarify missing middle zones instead of transition areas?
Yes, that's a good, let's call it, yeah, since it's not necessarily transition, map missing, map additional missing middle near dedicated parkland of substantial size.
Okay, is there a second?
Can I add something real quick because just roll it in? The comment about infrastructure for sidewalks and such, I mean, previously, we also talked about planned sidewalks and planned, like, if it's in the plans, then we should consider them. I mean.
I think maybe, let's take a quick vote on this and then maybe do a quick one on that.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shea. So this is Kenny Shea Amendment. I keep track of these.
I'll just read that one more time. Map additional missing middle near parkland of substantial size. And as a reminder, we did approve the amendment last time. This is overriding any other instruction. Don't map additional stuff in the protected areas. So this would only apply to non.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Did you want to speak to that some more or?
No.
Okay. Questions?
So does that include the lighter part and public safety infrastructure, or is that without that?
Yeah, it's all still in there. All I did was add in additional, change transition zones to missing middle, and add of substantial size.
Commissioner Yanez Polido.
Hi, good evening. Whoops, my mic's on, near me. Sorry I was late, and I was listening since y'all started on the live stream. But just to clarify, does this address then the concern about additional transition zones where we don't have sidewalk infrastructure? Does that be a separate, that's a separate thing altogether?
Commissioner Shea just indicated that maybe we take that up after this.
Okay.
Other questions?
I got a question.
Commissioner Hempel, then Howard.
My question is about the substantial size term. I'm thinking about Republic Square, which is an acre and a half of being a park that would be, you know, fit into this category, I would think. So I don't know, it has to be about size, but more about programming within the park, perhaps.
Okay. Is that a question? Did you want someone to respond to that?
Can we, can we change substantial size to programming that meets requirements?
We can't change it, so you'll have to make an amendment to this amendment.
Commissioner, in answer to your question, I think it could be a good amendment to this amendment to say after substantial size, say of substantial size or high levels of programming, something like that.
Can I propose an amendment? Adding the language after substantial size and/or programming, substantial programming.
Okay.
Substantial size or programming.
Substantial size or programming of substance? I'm just kidding. Okay. All right, I think we get the idea. All right.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Kenny. Amendment to the amendment. Don't get me into this trap here of a chain of amendments. Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Thompson?
Can I speak against?
Yeah, if there's no questions, are there any questions? Okay, Howard and Azar.
So we were talking about missing middle. Was there any other consideration for other housing types?
Let me finish the high levels of programming first.
Okay, sorry.
Any questions about this amendment to the amendment? Commissioner Azar.
So I had a question. We got a presentation on the Parks and Recreation Long Range Plan. We could, and they have a map of all of the parks, both privately and publicly owned. Would it be reasonable to tie it to the inventory that it seems like they have already developed as part of the long range plan? This is a question.
Okay, anyone want to take that question? Anyone study that? Maybe even Mr. Grantham, or anyone that knows if those parks in that list would qualify as substantial size or high levels of programming?
It's a mix.
It's a mix? Okay. It's a mix, okay.
And I think we're just trying to capture intent.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm afraid we're diving into too specific.
I agree. Okay, speak against.
So I think early on in this conversation, staff basically said, so what you're saying is just, should we look again at where we're putting some housing? And we said yes, and they understood that intent, and now we're spending a lot of time kind of nickel and diming and wordsmithing when they already took the intent and they already agreed that it was a good idea to go do it. So let's just let them go do this, and they can sort of come back with the size of the park that seems appropriate, or the size that doesn't, and how it all fits into the grid, and just, let's just try and keep high level and intent here.
Okay, good comment, but we have an amendment on the table, so the fastest we can do this is to vote on the amendment. Any other commissioners speaking for or against?
Can I speak for?
Go ahead.
Not to belabor the point, but I agree, however, that these items are going to go to council for its potential endorsement, so I think clarity but generality of language might be what we're looking for.
Okay. Could someone read the exact intent, final intent?
As amended, it will say, map additional missing middle near dedicated parkland of substantial size or programming, et cetera.
You're keeping in the sidewalk piece.
Yes, unless we have another amendment after this one. So let's get through this. Any other commissioners speaking against?
I'll quickly, speak against.
Go ahead.
I'm fine to speak against all these transition amendments, honestly. At this point, I agree with Commissioner Thompson. I think we're done.
Okay. Commissioner Fores? Okay, all right, let's take a vote. So this is for just adding or substantial programming. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. All those opposed? Abstaining? Okay, so that motion passes. 10 to 1. Now we're back to Kenny Shea Amendment, and that's additional missing middle near parkland of substantial size, and now programming. Any questions on that? Commissioner Howard has a question, and then Azar.
Yeah, so I had a question about just focus primarily on missing middle and why, what was the basis for that versus maybe affordable or other type, housing types?
I guess it's my amendment. The, I think the, it just may be too much of a lift to put RM4 there. I think that the purpose of a lot of these amendments, if you support them, which some do not, is to provide ideas to staff on where they can put stuff that we have already removed and that I think others will inevitably seek to remove to balance the equation.
Well, and the missing middle zones have affordability built into them.
Depending on your definition, but I would think that staff gets it, it's like R4, RM1, stuff with bonuses.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Azar.
I would like to propose an amendments, and I think partially because I'm hearing this concern about sidewalk, and I just quickly checked our sidewalk priority network, and I'm seeing a lot of the places that have lower walkability scores happen to be our highest opportunity areas, happen to be west of MOPAC. That's just the way our city is. So I would like to say that it would now be with the amendment that has already passed, essentially map transition areas near dedicated parkland of substantial size or programming, et cetera, essentially with considerations for safety. So I want to broaden it. I'm not saying that we do not consider safety, but I think tying it specifically to our existing sidewalk infrastructure, I think will go against some of the intent that we have here in terms of high opportunity. But I do agree with Commissioner Shaw that that was something that I had not considered when we were looking at this within our working group. So I appreciate the comment that has come up.
Okay, so is there a second to Azar's amendment? I feel like I got to take this vote first because you're bringing up a different topic. Let me take Kenny's vote first, and then we'll add safety to it. Any other comments on Commissioner, the Kenny Shea Amendment? Speaking for? Speaking against? Let's take a vote. Did you want to speak against? Go ahead.
So I'm concerned by just the addition of additional, only because I'm thinking about who uses parks. By and large, parks are most utilized by people who either have a lack of green space accessible to them or are lower or moderate income. That's really evidenced in my own, the area where I live in, where you have a development that's 90% white, but the park space is usually 80% non-white when you go to it, and lower moderate income people. And so I'm concerned just about the walkability issue, and I would like staff to take a better look at where transition areas are being mapped where there's no sidewalks, because walkability has been one of the biggest concerns that I've heard from people who live in those areas. And I think that they're the people who are more likely to be walking to the parks in a lot of cases. So that's, I am in support of looking at sidewalks and walkability moving forward, but I would like for it also be to look, to be looked at at proposed transition areas.
Okay. Speaking for or against or neutral? Okay, let's take a vote. Kenny Shea Amendment to add additional missing middle and substantial size. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. All those against? Any abstaining? That motion passes 11 to 2. Commissioner Azar, we can take up your amendment now. Is there a second to Commissioner Azar's motion? Second by Commissioner Seeger. The motion has to do with adding, instead of when accessible sidewalks and public safety infrastructure exist, is to say with consideration for safety. Okay. Are there questions?
So basically, it's just broadening it versus being very prescriptive. It's more qualitative.
That is definitely my intent.
Any other questions? Speaking against? Speaking for or neutral? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, any abstaining? That motion passes 12 to 1. Now we're back to the original motion. Speaking against? This is the original motion by Shaw, and it was seconded by Seeger?
I think so, yes. Kind of a while ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago. Speaking against? Speaking for or neutral? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Shaw?
I have a question. If I could have a brief consult with my working group, I want to consider maybe paring this list down. Could I have one minute? Because it may shorten the time.
You have to do it in the microphone.
Okay. Okay. So on the next item, we do, I don't think we have an AISD representative here. I had emailed Ann Tyke to try to get input on this item, but as I have not seen, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that we have an AISD response to the code, I would like to defer to that one until perhaps going on an individual amendment list later. So may not consider that one right now.
Is there any opposition to that? Commissioner Azar?
I'll be honest, I did have a conversation with one of our AISD board members, and they said that this is a conversation they've had. But I think I hear your concern. Is there a way for us to move ahead with this and just essentially say with consultation and conversation with the AISD board and staff?
We could, somebody could propose that amendment, but I think I'm just trying to save time here. So, and I can bring it back up as an individual amendment for myself. Maybe we'll have AISD input at that point. So that's my preference.
We can also ask staff and see what they have in line with AISD, you know?
I think that sounds good.
Hi, I know there have been conversations with AISD, but I cannot speak the specifics of those conversations at this time.
Okay. All right, let's table this for later.
Okay, and the next one, and I'm looking at Commissioner Seeger, we had a 2-3 vote on localized flooding, which I feel is worthy of a discussion. I have moved that, that's the last item, 13. I've moved that and brought that up as an individual amendment for myself, and I think given that we kind of had a minority vote there, my recommendation is to maybe move that for later.
Any opposition from the working group? Okay, all right, those two are tabled as your individual amendments. What are we doing next, 11?
Yes, I do want to take up item 11.
By itself?
We can look at item 11 and...
13, no, no, number 10.
Item 12 possibly, but there may be commissioners that want to keep those separated. So it's basically, looking at those is both, kind of, we can't do one without the other. We have to maintain missing middle, try to gain more missing middle while we're doing more context-sensitive mapping, but we might want to take this up.
Let's try them together, and then someone could split them up. If we need to, go ahead and read both of them in.
Okay, number 11, for segments of transit priority network and IE corridors that are fronted by a majority of residential zones, i.e. currently SF3 or more restrictive, in addition to council direction on context-sensitive mapping criteria, reduce depth and density of zones within these transition areas based on unique conditions of the transit priority network and IE corridor segment. Consider the following related criteria. So these are for consideration only for reducing transition areas, number of continuous residential blocks or length of residential segment, two, lack of transit center stops, number three, capacity of the roadway to handle increased R4 and RM1 density, number four, the high-frequency bus route triggering the TPN designation was established to reach a designation beyond the residential area, number five, orientation of lots on TPN or IE corridors, those houses that front the corridor, number six, proximity to other TPN IE corridors and centers, number seven, street width and lack of right-of-way of TPN or corridor that make it difficult to support needs of the residents, i.e. electric, water, trash services, parking, et cetera, number eight, street width and lack of right-of-way will not support multimodal transportation options due to the lack of space for sidewalks and bike lanes and less wildfire risk. And the justification, should I speak to this now, or?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Did you want to read the other one, or did you want to leave them separate?
Yes, I'll read them together. Number 12 is map transition zones in high opportunity areas and IE centers with missing middle zones to achieve the goal of 30% missing middle housing. housing. So there may be some word changes that are needed here, but this is basically mapping, additional mapping of zones to achieve that goal because we were short, we only reached 18%. The goal is 30.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak to it real quick? And actually, let me get a second and then, Commissioner, second by Commissioner Seeger. Okay, thank you.
Can we move to split?
Okay. Is there a second to split? Commissioner Yanis Pudido, is there a discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Just split.
Commissioner Thompson?
Split.
Okay. Raise your hand again.
This is for?
For splitting?
Splitting.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. All right, so we're back to Commissioner Shaw speaking to item 11.
Okay, I need the exhibits for this one for item 11. And let's start with number six.
Exhibit six.
I'll read the justification here, we're pulling this up. So the land use policy number one in the Austin Strategic Mobility Plan, I worked with that front end in the language crafting with Commissioner Kenny, and it supports density along transit priority network, but this policy promotes the principle that IA corridors and those transit priority networks having high density, commercial zoning facing the corridor that are designated as high capacity transit should be mapped with the deepest and highest density of transition areas. IA and TPN corridors fronted with residential should not be prioritized for the same transition area density. Again, this comes out of land use policy number one. Council also provided for context sensitive mapping criteria and called for special mapping of what they called residential TPNs. And I'm not going to read that criteria to you, but these are additional context sensitive criteria to consider. And just looking at this exhibit, again, we've seen this before, you see the kind of deepest, this is areas in my district, so I'm most familiar with them. You're just looking at the color, you see some of the deepest transition areas are on these residential TPNs and not along our main corridors. So it, it just, you, you got to ask yourself why. And so if we go to numbers, we don't need to see number seven. Actually, let's look at the images real quick. TWG, there's the image. Okay, so these are, this is 45th Street. Those street widths are eight and a half feet in width. And so if we can just shift, go through those quickly. This is what you're looking at for 45th Street. And so I don't think we're going to support multimodal transit. A bus stop would be difficult along this route. And so I'm just trying to let you imagine what would, if we've got four units R4, but we actually have RM1 also zoned along here, what that's going to create along this segment. And I know there's others that are similar. Again, this is just one in my district that I'm familiar with. So I'm opening up the conversation on these residential TPNs. Should we look at additional context sensitive mapping criteria beyond what council has specified to aid staff?
Okay. So I didn't do this before, but I want to thank staff for being here. I know it's going to be a long night. Does staff have any comment on that?
Yes. It gets me every time, every single time. When it comes to this amendment, generally staff is in agreement. We have been out in the community since the release on October 4th and we've been talking to a lot of people. And as we learn more about the context of these different transit priority networks and residential corridors, we agree that we need to start looking at some of the more context sensitive factors and thinking through the transition area mapping in these areas.
Thank you. I can also tell in the staff who the hipsters are with the MacBooks and the rest of them have Dell laptops, so. There's Commissioner Leighton Burwell as well, he's got a MacBook. All right. Okay.
No, I was turning my mic off.
Oh, okay. No questions? Speaking for or against, Commissioner Seeger?
I'm going to speak for it since the other, one side is District 7 and the other side is District 10, my district. This is a crazy road that I guess at one time was a cow path. They just kind of paved. It twists and turns and it has curbs that have been run over so frequently because of the turbs that they're kind of all broken up, et cetera. There's absolutely no room, as the pictures depicted, to have true multimodal. We're lucky to have cars because once you take out a lane and a bus stop, there's not much left. The Grove is a high intense development at the corner of 45th and basically Loop 1. It is going to attract a lot more traffic. I'm just very, very concerned with the traffic that will be initiated by the upzone and especially to RM1 in this area.
Speaking against? Commissioner Thompson?
I mean, so we're asking to move to a 50% mode share, where we're cutting down the number of people who drive alone to work every day to 50%. With, even with the growth that we're seeing now, that basically means no new car commuters. And so if what we're saying is there, there aren't going to, we're not going to have, we don't have any more room for cars on our streets, then we're basically just saying that these people don't have to have any more density. If we're not going to put transit on those corridors and we say that transit's impossible and it has to be cars, then what we're saying is that there's no more room for density in that part of town. And that doesn't seem equitable. It doesn't seem the goal that we had and it doesn't seem where, you know, the direction that we need to go.
Okay. Speaking for, Commissioner Shay?
So I don't think this motion is saying that we do, this amendment is saying that we don't put anything along these. It's just that with those, we need to reconsider the intensity as well, as well as the depth of it to be context sensitive. And in addition, the ASMP, when it talks about what a TPN is, it talks about mixed use. It talks about complete communities. It talks about those aspects. So if it's just residential, it's just a bus passing through, where is that mixed use that's there? You know, maybe the bus was there to service some portion of it along the way, but it, it doesn't fit the definition of what the TPN is. A residential TPN is kind of an oxymoron because it's, how do you have it residential? And the whole point of it is supposed to be a complete community with some type of mixed use. So that's why I'm supporting this.
Commissioner Azar, are you speaking against? Go ahead.
So this was something that I had raised in our working group as well and I'll be voting against it because I particularly have a concern with number four here, which is the high frequency bus route triggering the TPN designation was established to reach a designation beyond the residential area. I will be honest, the high frequency bus routes that we have, which come every 15 minutes, are extremely substantial. As someone who try, who essentially I do not know how to drive, as most folks know, I pretty much, all I do is take transit and depend on the kindness of strangers like the people here who occasionally take me home. I just want to say, I really worked hard to find any apartment that I could afford on the number seven or the number 20, which happened to be high frequency routes. And I will be honest, I could not find anything that was affordable. These are areas where housing is lacking. And I'll be honest, the 15 minute bus, the bus that comes every 15 minutes is pretty substantial for anyone who depends on it. And eventually ended up living somewhere where I cannot afford to live, but here I am trying to depend on transit. I just want to say I cannot support this because I genuinely feel like the high frequency bus routes are extremely substantial and should not be taken out as a consideration.
Okay. Last commissioner speaking against or neutral?
No, against or four?
No, four, I already, I already used up three, four, so.
Oh, put each on?
Hmm. Against or neutral? Commissioner Anderson?
It just seems like a really, it almost seems purpose built to remove housing in high opportunity areas and to require the homes that are built there to be big expensive single family homes. I can't support this.
Okay, that's... Okay, that was clearly against. Can I say something really quick? We're talking about, or that was, oh, my bad. Sorry.
Okay, that's three, four and three against, folks. Let's take a vote. All those in favor? Let me remind you, so this is for the Shaw-Seeger amendment, number 11. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. All those against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Any abstaining? I lost someone. Against, one more time? One, two, three, four, five. Wait, now we got, yeah, okay. One more time. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. That motion fails. Eight, five to eight. All right. Number 12, Shaw-Seeger. Commissioner Shaw, did you want to speak to it?
No, I'll let others speak to it.
Okay. Questions?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to understand what we're defining as missing middle because early on in all of this, when we talked about missing middle, missing middle was designed as duplexes and triplexes and on up from there and just anything that's non-single family. So in my mind, when we have our R2s now, and especially with our preservation incentives, we potentially have triple units on all R2s. And so in my mind, I'm looking at this, it's like we just basically mapped most of the city, majority of the city is all missing middle. We even have small lots, even R1s, those are small lots. Small lots are also missing middle. So in my mind, you know, in this conversation, I think we've achieved that goal. My concern really is on the affordability, you know, I mean, I think we've really fallen short on affordability. I'm not concerned about the missing middle so much just because, you know, in my definition from where we started, we got a missing middle. Anyway, that's, that's my take on it.
Before you respond to that, let me get to staff. Does staff have a comment? Go ahead.
Yes, this is another amendment that we're generally in, in agreement with. This is consistent with not only council direction, but also we're, have been open to the conversation about how we can continue to further that council direction to map more missing middle opportunities in high opportunity areas.
Could, could staff also comment on Commissioner Shay's question about that we didn't quite get the affordable housing we were looking for? My understanding was the ASMP or the Housing Blueprint, in their, they showed density bonuses only getting maybe 1,500 units. And draft, this draft is showing about 9,000. So are we saying we're short?
Erica Leek, Neighborhood Housing. So the Housing Blueprint goal was actually identified to note how much affordable housing we need as a community, basically what our gap is. And so that gap is estimated to be approximately 60,000 over the next 10 years. So that's how the goal was set. We were very clear that we did not have sufficient identified resources or tools to be able to reach that really ambitious goal. The land development code is one of those tools. We knew that it would, it would never be able to meet the need for, for the amount of affordable housing we need because we estimated that it would cost between $6 billion and $11 billion to, to, to be able to build as much affordable housing as we need. And that's just not something that you can create through an incentive program as part of the code because in Texas, the only way to, to be able to, to achieve affordable housing through the code has to be through an incentive program that really provides a financial incentive for people to participate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw? Were you going to respond to Commissioner Shay's comment?
I had a question for staff and I don't know if it's...
Did you have a, did your question get answered?
No.
Not, not really, but I am, it's more about the whole definition about missing middle because it started as, you know, from the beginning, it talked about duplexes on up, but it's obviously that staff has changed the definition from where we had started in this conversation with Code Next, you know, and what missing middle is.
Okay. But did you want to direct it to someone to get, get an answer?
Yes.
I think if staff can explain how the definition of missing middle has kind of changed through the past couple of years from when we said duplexes and small lots and different ADUs are all missing middle and now for some reason, it's no longer missing middle.
So Commissioner, I'm not sure that we agree that the definition has changed. It's not a, just to be clear, missing middle is not a term that's used in the code. It's just kind of a colloquial expression that's used to refer to, I think, smaller scale multifamily development that is not, you know, a big apartment building, but it provides more units than a single family home. And I think that's been kind of our working definition of it. I don't know if, Greg, do you have any?
I mean, for instance, a triple unit is, becomes missing middle because it's not single family. It's not a big huge thing. It's somewhere in the middle. And, you know, with R2s, we technically have the ability to do all of that. But there's a difference between missing middle and missing middle versus transition zone. Transition zone to me is not saying that that's missing middle. I mean, to me, those are two different things. And I think we're, we're thinking in terms, when we do 30% goal, you might be thinking 30% all transition zones, whereas I'm thinking this thing exactly according to council, they want missing, you know, we talked about missing middle, not transition zone.
No, the two are definitely separate.
Right.
The transition, I think the goal of the transition zones is to facilitate missing middle, but there will be missing middle housing types existing elsewhere throughout the city as well. So the 30%, I think that you're talking about is definitely a broader goal and Peter can hopefully help clarify.
But the whole, yeah, but all R2s are now, are considered missing middle because we can get triple units. So we've probably achieved that goal.
Peter Park. I don't know if, is this, is on, all right. Peter Park, consulted with the staff. Commissioner Shay, you're, I just want to make sure I understand. You're saying that because the R2 do allow two units?
Up to, also three units.
Up to three in certain situations, that you're counting the, those as also missing, potentially missing, providing missing middle.
That, that's correct. And that's why to me, the intent, I mean, the parts that we really felt was on the affordable stuff. And so I'm more concerned, why are we so worried about 30% when we should be thinking, trying to reach to get a better affordable numbers versus, oh, we didn't hit this 30% goal because in my mind, we did because all R2s are that.
Okay. I think if it helps to, in terms of the transition, we typically refer them as transition, the transition areas, where the council direction was to use two zones that we'll call, I mean, we've been using as missing middle zones, the R4, intentionally the R4 and the RM1 to comprise those, the mapping of those transition areas, right? So they're, they're both missing, provide for missing middle. Your point about the R, the R2, if potentially allowing or getting developed as three does begin to approach what is in the realm of of missing middle. You're right about that.
Hmm.
In terms of the, the affordable, the affordable housing goal, as Erica Leek described, the goal of 60,000 is certainly an ambitious one. The code, the nearest equivalent of your code today, by Cascadia's estimate, delivers about, and Echo Northwest's estimate is about 1,500. And so under the code revision, the estimate is six times what your current code does. So in terms of the improvement compared to today, it is a pretty significant improvement. Again, the, there is the bonus, because it is a bonus incentive, it does depend on someone taking up that bonus, right? So.
I think it would be fairly easy to figure out how many third units are, how many R2 zones there are, how many third units, and if that comes anywhere close to 30%. My sense is that it's not going to go from 18 to 30. But we have a, we have a, an amendment here to... vote on. Any other questions? Commissioner Shaw?
I have a question.
Shaw, then Thompson?
Just real quick, unless I missed it, did the 18%, the modeling that was done, include missing middle outside of the transition areas?
Yes, the capacity numbers that account for potential missing middle capacity include 2 to 10 units and small lot.
Okay, so it did go beyond just the transition areas. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson?
So, in the, the amendment, it talks about missing middle in IA centers. And I just wanted, is that really, I mean, because I would think that the center would actually be zoned for something more intense than the missing middle. And, what, can you speak to that?
If you read council direction, there's, they talk about more missing middle within centers, but then you kind of, in other parts of it, you understand that maybe they were talking about within a certain distance around centers. So, I think, I agree with you. It may be looking more broadly about some areas, you know, kind of surrounding those centers to get more of the missing middle. But again, we could make that clarification, but this is just a high-level direction to staff to try to find other ways to meet the goal.
Did you want staff to address that, or? I think staff's already said that they've looked at two intersecting corridors, but not the center itself.
I, I mean, right, I find that I don't feel the centers are completely mapped out. And I wouldn't want to necessarily encourage them to even, you know, I think the centers should be mapped out with something that was more than missing middle, more than R4.
Commissioner Seager?
I want to make a comment about what Commissioner Shea has started the discussion on, and that's-
Is that a question as well?
Pardon me?
Is that a question also?
I'm trying to think of the question. Okay. Staff, on the sheet that you gave us that showed the number of parcels and the number of parcels per zone, on the R2 zones, it appears that there's roughly 148,000 parcels in those R2 zones. And if you look at the total of all the parcels, it's 222,000, which, if you, if you were looking at R2 providing missing middle, would that be 66.5% of the total lots in Austin that are zoned, or parcels? Let's, let's call them parcels, then.
Can you clarify the question?
I'm trying to make it a question. Okay. This mapping, I have it highlighted, because I look at the R2 zones. There's roughly 148,000 parcels zoned that way, out of the total of 222,000 parcels in the city, which also includes pugs and some other things. Looking at the R2s, which could be considered missing middle, that would equate, do you agree that that could equate to 66.5% of total parcels, which means that we have absolutely met our missing middle quota if we assume that ADUs are possible on all those lots?
So, the numbers have taken into account those capacity numbers? Yeah, actually, I'll let Laura address this, she's probably better suited for this.
Laura Keating, Planning and Zoning. So, the housing capacity analysis looks at each parcel and gauges the feasibility of one or two units on that parcel. So, those, that number of parcels, they're not all producing two units under the capacity analysis. And some of them aren't, aren't reading as producing any new units.
But if it's even reduced by 50%, we're still at 30% off of the total units of 66%. And let's throw out half of those, we're still at 30%. And I, I think I'm supporting what Commissioner Shea was saying. Maybe we do have the missing middle capacity, and perhaps, not to get off missing middle, we should look at affordable housing, rather than just missing middle.
Yeah. So, the capacity analysis, if you add up small lots, and then anything that's two to 10 units on a lot, that was 18% of the total capacity.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at something that could go higher than two, definitely go higher, especially with the preservation incentive, which, you know, you throw out the far and you get a, a unit. Just a thought, I'm not going to belabor this, it's going to be a long night anyhow.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Yanis Plido?
Laura, you might want to come back. Well, I don't know. I guess I, so, when you talk about feasibility, is that because of the limitation of other elements of the code, such as setbacks, trees, et cetera, parking?
So, feasibility, there, I'll do my best to describing it, but under, on our website, there's some more information about the methodology that was used for the housing capacity. But they'll look at an existing parcel, and they'll look at, like, the land value and the cost, and test the feasibility of new development, if it's a vacant parcel, or redevelopment, if it's a, if it has development on it right now. And so, that identifies a number of parcels that contribute to the capacity analysis. Then, to get to your question, they don't always assume the maximum entitlements are built on any one parcel. So, there's another discounting, to say, if you're allowed eight units on the parcel, they might be assuming you're, you're going to get six units, or, because of those other constraints on development.
So, the first part I understood as a market analysis for feasibility, but the second part is that, what's the basis behind, if they're zoned for eight, they might only get six?
It's based on analysis of underbuild, because of site constraints such as trees-
The stuff that, yeah, that I just mentioned.
And impervious cover and whatnot.
Okay. So, I think that's a, that's a concern that keeps coming up, particularly among environmental folks. But, I mean, even when we're talking about affordability, but especially heritage tree and impervious cover, if there's stuff that we're looking at giving administrative variance, there's an argument, once we, basically, what I keep hearing from a lot of folks is like, why are we zoning, why are we giving so many more entitlements than what we think is feasible? And it allows people to come back and say, I'm entitled to this, and this is standing in my way. So, I'm wondering if an analysis has been, if y'all have considered that in terms of the impact that that has, because you're basically putting, there's increased land value associated with the entitlement, and an argument to go after that, that full entitlement with these other pieces in the way. You don't have to answer that now, but that is a concern I have.
Okay, any other questions? All right, speaking against? Speaking for? Let's take a vote. Commissioner Shaw, would you reread the amendment, please, just to remind us?
It says, map transition zones, high-opportunity areas, oh, should be, let's go ahead and say, within high-opportunity areas and IA centers with missing middle zones to achieve the goal of 30% missing middle housing.
Okay. All right, that's the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Abstaining? Okay. So, that motion passes. Seven, one, six. Did I do that math right?
No.
No?
One too many.
No. Abstaining, one more time? Four. Four, okay, now I don't have the math at all. All right, four. One more time. Voting four? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Gotcha. Eight, one, four. Okay. Those are all of the transition working group amendments. We tabled 10 and 13 for individual amendments for Commissioner Shaw. And now, we're going into residential. Commissioner Kenny, did you want to kind of set the stage?
Yes, let me ensure this. So, we've grouped them by subject area. The first one got cut off, but it's about FAR, or floor area. And the amendments that, I think they're labeled here, let's see, the, oh, yeah, okay. So, if you look in the second to leftmost column, you'll see that they are labeled either as consent or discussion. Consent amendments are those that have the support of all members of the working group, and discussion are ones that did not have consensus support. So, what I'd like to do is to, and then, so, and the consents are on top, so what I'd like to do is introduce and offer each consent group for each topic area as a block. I'd like to go ahead and, and use my time to speak for it, part of my time to speak for it, as, as I introduce it, so we can explain kind of what it is and why, before anybody offers any motions to split. Does that all make sense to everybody?
Yeah, you're doing no more than whatever we decide.
Oh, I don't think we have five or, more than five or six at a time.
We've got 10, but-
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, starting at the top, number 21, and the numbers are odd, because this is the numbering from our original package. So, anybody who's trying to reference that can look back. We do have a few new ones and some edits that were made. So, it's not exactly the same as the ones that were filed last week. The first is double height, space relation to FAR. Oh, and this is just a clarification, because I've gotten this question. I think on the 12th, I will offer some sort of an amendment or something to clarify that when considering these amendments, a lot of times, the context for it is in the title, and it's kind of critical to have that attached to it, and you might lose the meaning if you divorce them. So, we need to make sure that when staff and council are looking at these, that they're looking at both the title and the intent statement.
When you say title, you mean double height, space relation to FAR?
That's right.
Got it.
Some of them, it's real important that the title be in it. So, in calculating FAR, all-conditions space, 15 feet and taller, counts twice towards FAR. I want to say this is current code, but I'm getting a shake of the head, or nod from James, Commissioner Shea. But the note is to prevent future busting of FAR by installing a future floor system, count double, so, in other words, people will put a floor in and divide a double height to two. They're also incredibly energy inefficient. The second one in the package is SF-attached FAR calibration. Currently, in several zones, or it's, the intent statement is sync FAR-attached FAR equal to FAR for a duplex in each zone that allows both. Ensured, we do not allow gaming of FAR with subsequent subdividing. So, what that means is that, you know, SF-attached is just a subdivided duplex. If we're going to offer .6 FAR for a duplex, in a lot of zones, SF-attached only has .4. So, we just want to allow people, if you built a legal duplex, to be able to subdivide it, it's still probably .6 then on each half. So, it's just syncing that up. It's not saying, give it a specific number, it's just saying, if you allow duplex and SF-attached, sync that FAR. The next one is the R4 FAR adjustment. Revise the R4 FAR to be graduated by unit count, right now, it's by form. Increasing to incentivize more missing middle units and reevaluate the bonus FAR in consideration of bonus viability. We suggest the language of adding FAR to vary by, to vary FAR by unit count, not form, such as that one to two units have the same .4 FAR that the SF that they got rezoned to has today. For three to four units, it increases to .6. So, note that this is less than you get an R2 specifically to encourage going to three and four, instead of just to two. And then, for five to eight units, we ask staff to reexamine, considering the bonus viability. And so, this is to game the R4 to produce at least three to four, not just one to two, and help, and hopefully, maybe more with a bonus to make it viable. And we will note that AIA noted that FAR and impervious cover are the limitations on R4 being able to actually build its bonus, because not enough is, is offered there to build a full six or eight units. The next one is to limit the garage FAR exemption. In calculating FAR, floor area ratio, limit garage carport exemption to 200 square feet per unit. The notes are, this can prevent overbuilding of parking spaces, unregulated construction of structured space can cause busting of FAR by future enclosing and conditioning of the space, i.e. legal garage conversions, where we have seen in the past. Where parking minimums eliminate or reduce, this helps to buffer creating parking without penalizing the street or the homeowner. So, just to recall, the current code exemption for an attached garage is 200 square feet. This matches current code. And it, essentially, under the proposed code, as long as you're not busting your impervious cover, you could build very large garages and have them not count against the floor area of your house. While floor area is an affordability indicator, if we're talking about regulating the bulk of buildings and the feel of them, then garages are just as much bulk as houses are. And then, the last one in the consent package is to limit preservation bonus FAR. It's to cap the preservation bonus FAR at 0.8. Currently, it's unlimited in the draft code. This is a pretty practical size. You're not probably going to see that much above it, so it maybe is more of a clarity than anything else issue. But it's also probably practically all that you can get if you have an existing house on the lot that's probably only one or maybe two stories. That is the consent package. Do I have a second?
Second by Seager. All right. Did you want to speak further to it?
No.
Okay. Can we get staff to comment on those?
Greg Dutton, Planning and Zoning. Regarding the, sorry, I'm looking at this list here. Regarding the preservation incentive FAR, I think we're in agreement that it needs to be adjusted, but the preservation incentive currently goes through RM and MU zones. So, it's capped at .8 FAR, it may not be very attractive in those zones.
I'll just point out that, because this is the residential work group, amendments in here should only be considered as applying to residential zones.
Okay, like the residential house scale zone?
The R zones.
The C-R zones, okay.
Not the RM?
Not RM. We did not look at RM in our work group.
Does that change your answer, Greg, or?
Yeah, it make, it, we think it makes sense to be adjusted in, in those zones, yeah.
Okay. Any others that you want to?
In the, sorry, did you talk about the R1 zone, or is that, are you?
That's up for discussion.
That's for next, okay. I, I think for the exemptions for garages and attics, we generally think that it makes sense for the parking facilities, but maybe not as much for attics, just because-
Attics are up for discussion. We just did garages here.
Okay.
Greg, can you comment on that as far as, that's current code, and then staff changed it from current code? Can you talk a little bit more about?
Yeah, in, in the current code, there are exemptions for attics, attic spaces and, and parking spaces, carports and garages. Staff tried to simplify that by making attics and, and parking facilities just not count towards FAR at all. And, and, so that exemption is, just, doesn't exist. It's, it's essentially, all that space is exempted. It doesn't count towards FAR in the draft code.
Okay. Were you going to comment on any of these other ones? Do you have the same list, or do you not have this one? What, we have printed in front of us?
Yeah.
You do?
I do have the same list, yeah.
Okay. So, 21, two, and five. Any comments on those?
Nothing to add, just generally, staff does not oppose.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioners, we have Kenny, Kenny Seager amendment for these first five consent items from the working group. Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Ozar? Commissioner Ozar?
And I think this has partially been addressed by staff, but I just had a question for the preservation bonus. This is number 33. I'm just trying to look at this. So currently, we offer the 0.8 FAR and, for example, R4 with a bonus. So if you were doing an affordable unit, you would get to 0.8. And here, you have 0.8 with the preservation, which might be understandable. But then I'm looking at R4 and you all have 0.6 for five to eight units. So I'm just trying to understand. I feel like it's almost in some ways higher than R4 base. But then also it gets to equivalent of bonus without providing an affordable unit. I do want to say I appreciate this amendment. We've heard a lot of concern on this one, that the unlimited FAR was not viable. But I just want to hear why 0.8 and if there was some thought behind it.
We really, I think we're mostly thinking about R2. Just to characterize our discussions, I think that if someone wants to bring up the topic of just the very existence of a preservation bonus and its viability versus an affordability bonus, I think that's kind of a different topic. I think what we were trying to do is just rein in, at the very least, maybe just the perception of it.
Staff, did you want to say something on that?
Yes, I was just going to, Lyndy Garwood with planning and zoning. I was just going to also note that the preservation incentive, we've also gotten a lot of feedback on. And we are going to do some tweaks and calibration from staff perspective. I think we noted that in our last staff report. So if the point A in particular is concerning compared to others, R2 versus R4, that is something we can, you know, consider as staff and look at calibrating that as we're making tweaks to the preservation incentive based on your guidance.
Okay, so I think I still have my dying my last second question, which is going back to number five. I'm looking at that. So this is for FAR for R4. And so for five to eight units, you now have 0.6.
No, I'm sorry, maybe formatted that poorly. For one to two, it's 0.4, semicolon, three to four units, 0.6, semicolon, five to eight units. Staff, please look at this.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So this is kind of to answer some of the questions that, about the preservation incentive. Part of the reason for the .8 also came about that if a duplex was .6 and you have an existing house, or probably a smaller house, we're thinking it might exist around .15 to .2. So we can hold it at that. So basically, it ends up .8. If somebody decides that that house gets torn down for some strange reason, whatever, then at least they're not busting it. The other thing is when you do unlimited FAR, you basically take the valuation of that property potentially. It's who knows what. And if we want to talk about affordability, people being able to stay and live in their homes, that price of that dirt, you know, we're talking, if that was one of those homes that are situated in the right spot, that will go through the roof. Because at that point, with unlimited FAR, I would build as big as I can to squeeze out every penny. And that person who's living there is out and they would get displaced. So that was kind of the reasoning why we capped the FAR on preservation incentive.
Yeah, I think it's a good question, Commissioner Ozar. I would, I would rather see this be less prescriptive. And if staff's already looking at it, to maybe move the very prescriptive .8 to the suggested language. But I'm not making that amendment. Any other questions?
Can I go for a second, Rob?
Not for a question. Commissioner Yanis Bolido?
Has anybody looked at the preservation bonus in comparison to the McMansion ordinance? Got a lot of feedback about bringing the FAR limits at least down to that. And I guess, I, it was brought to my attention that in the McMansion ordinance, there is an ability for neighborhoods to actually bring, well, there was in the beginning, an ability for neighborhoods to bring a different FAR, like a lower FAR than even what was permitted in McMansion. A lot of neighborhoods missed out on that. So I was just wondering if there's any consideration of something like that.
No, we did not discuss that. I will point out that the point for FAR that's allotted for a single unit is the McMansion ordinance. And I am not aware of any areas of town that have a lower FAR. So if you brought the, and since the FAR is the preservation incentive, if you brought it down to McMansion side, that would just eliminate the preservation incentive.
Any follow up? Commissioner Yanis Bolido? Okay. Any other questions? All right, speaking against? Or splitting? Speaking for? Commissioner Seeger?
I'm going to speak for it. I looked at this really closely because I thought that perhaps the .8 was too high in all instances. However, .8 is much better than unlimited. And that's why I supported it.
Speaking against or neutral? Last commissioner speaking for?
Can I make a, wait, can we substitute?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to make it less prescriptive. Just to say cap preservation bonus FAR at, well, cap preservation bonus FAR at duplexed unit, duplex plus home? I don't know. I guess what I'm trying to do is add what you're talking about.
I was going to say, can I suggest maybe no more than .8? Would that get us to what we're trying to get at?
That's what it is.
That's true.
You know, I'm going to leave it at .8. I mean, and leave it at, staff can come back. They'll come back anyway.
I think it sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
I just want to point out that duplex, you get .6. So this is a point, and to get preservation, you're adding a unit. So what this really means is that you get no more than .2 over what you would get for building two units.
Right, but duplex might be going to .5.
It could.
So that's what it's like, I'm kind of let staff come up with that calculation. Because that's kind of, that's where we arrived at .8, was duplex plus .2. If duplex is going to be .5, then it's .5 plus, you know, .2. But that's the intent.
Okay. Last commissioner speaking for?
It's good, thank you.
All right, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so now we're moving on to discussion items. And I'll just point out that for discussion items, the initials indicate which commissioner is kind of the chief sponsor of it. And so I'm going to let them introduce the corresponding amendments. So the first one that I have, I'm going to offer it. And I'm going to offer it without the suggested text. I'm going to strike that. Because it's not as important as the intent, I think, in this case. So the amendment is to calibrate townhouse one-unit floor area allotment to allow three-story townhouses on smallest lots. Keep height maxes and other entitlements. So what this is, is I've lived in a lot of townhouses outside of Austin. And it's, they're at minimum two stories, if not three stories. I don't think you should need a bonus to build a regular tiny three-story townhouse on an 18-foot wide lot, which is what's allowed under current code. So, but currently, the FAR is .6, which results in at most a two. If it doesn't, if it has a garage, if it doesn't have a garage, it's like one and a half stories. That's not a townhouse. So I'm just, all I'm saying is, I'm not saying allow gargantuan townhouses. I'm saying when we're on the smallest lots, the 18-foot wide, 1800 square foot lots, let those townhouses be three stories. Staff, figure out how to do it.
That was your three minutes as well?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Thompson? Okay, so this is Kenny Thompson. Questions? Actually, staff first. Any thoughts from staff?
Just that we agree that the FAR needs to be looked at.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Shea?
Question for staff. So the intent on this thing, it says calibrate townhomes unit. Okay, so it doesn't, again, it's not the text. If we're talking about what the intent, it just, all it says is for a townhouse to have three stories. Isn't that already allowable under the current draft?
Yes.
Okay, so does this do anything then?
Well, it's an indication that because three stories are desired, that we probably need to look at the FAR allowance.
Okay, so, all right. That makes it difficult because I'm trying to understand what this amendment is. If we don't take the text and we just look at that, it has nothing to do with FAR. This thing is, all it says is to allow three stories. That's it. Because we removed the text portion of it.
Mr. Shea, can I make an amendment to my own motion? Is that allowable under the rules?
Yeah.
I'd like to amend it to, no, I don't need to. It says calibrate townhouse one-unit floor area allotment. So that could be done through a ratio or through a minimum square foot, some way of the floor area.
And you can further answer Commissioner Shea's question if you like.
Well, if you look over in the next column, there's the math there, which is that the impervious cover is 45%, but it's got a .6 FAR. So if you don't have the garage and you're using the full, let's say 40% building coverage, because 5% went to sidewalks or something like that, that's a story and a half. If you're doing an 18 square foot or wide lot, 1800 lot, that's, if you have a garage, maybe it's two stories. So my point is, is that if you are on the smallest lot in a townhouse in which you have no side setback, and you're using all of your FAR, which you probably will, or all of your impervious cover, which you probably will on a very small lot, that you should have enough FAR that you can take that 45% impervious cover and go up three stories. On the smallest lots. On very large lots, different story.
So my main concern with this is that when you have a small lot, you have smaller units. That's the whole idea. You don't have to get the biggest thing possible on a small, just subdivide it in a little bit larger. My concern is, we end up having all these 16, 1800 square foot. And the whole point, we get in smaller lots, we get smaller units, so it's more affordable. But when we start encouraging or allowing, let's say, you know, like current code already had something, oh, smallest on a 57, you know, 5,000 square foot lot, was like 2,300 square foot. We go back to some, you know, ungodly amount of affordability. If the whole point of this was to have smaller lots so we can get smaller units, so we can get more affordable units, then we got to make sure that we don't discourage that by taking these small lots and making them large square footage again. Because when you sell it, it's based upon that. And that's my main concern.
Yeah. To answer your question, I would say that, you know, it's fine to disagree at this point. But I will point out that under the draft code is written, narrow townhouses that you see in cities all over America would be illegal under our current code. Because you cannot achieve three stories in the FAR that is allotted for small lots.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. And this is, I'm going to direct it towards staff. We're having a debate, can you get three stories out of these small lots with the current FAR? Does it make sense to increase? No, we, how can, at what, how can you get three stories? Because I do agree that when you see townhouses, typically, they are three stories. How can you get it with the least amount of massing? Let's put it that way, massing.
So to Commissioner Shea's point, that you can get three stories because the zone allows it, you would just have a very tall skinny building with square footage allowed by your FAR. So maybe it wouldn't be as feasible as a larger product, but you could do it with what's currently allowed with the FAR.
Do we have anything on the ground today that's three stories that say was built under SF6, which has different rules, I know. But do we have two and three-story townhomes today?
Yeah, I mean, I can think of examples.
Okay, where we have two story and then we also have three stories. They obviously had greater allotments because they're not tall skinny buildings. And I'm just trying to weigh what the problem of a tall skinny building is in my mind. So, thank you for that input.
Any other questions? All right, speaking against? Or neutral? Speaking for?
Yeah, so we broke ground on 11 affordable townhomes in Miller, Austin Habitat, just, gosh, this, last week? Last Friday? And, I mean, we love this zoning type. So whatever we can do to help get more of this zoning type out there and make these things easier, because just by default, the shared walls, the more efficient use of land, all those things were great to get down our costs. So this is great.
Okay, speaking against or neutral? Commissioner Yanis Bolido?
Well, to Commissioner Anderson's point, I think it's a great thing to incentivize if we're talking about subsidized, deeply subsidized affordable housing. Otherwise, I think a larger three-story townhome is not, newly built is not going to be affordable to most people anywhere around. Especially when I look at the map, just in terms of where we have small lots, the remaining affordability in central Austin and areas of East Austin with really, I mean, then you get into like the narrow lots. But a lot of the smaller lots, I think, again, we've got a lot of mixed housing types. We've got a lot of missing middle. We don't have affordability. And small lots, smaller, smaller units on smaller lots was how missing middle was sold to us from the very beginning of Code Next. So I just think we need to be realistic about that. I'd rather see a much smaller, smaller thing. If it's not feasible for the market, maybe it shouldn't be, given what our actual directive is.
Speaking against, that was against. Speaking for? Commissioner Thompson?
I mean, we're talking about an 1800 square foot home, which isn't large by average standards. I think the average new home is like 2,500 square feet, 2,600 square feet. So this is, I would think, a moderate home. And I'm going to support it.
Okay. Speaking against or neutral? All right, let's take a vote.
I have a clarification question. We have taken out the explanation in the 1800 square foot minimum.
That's right, the suggested text is not offered as part of this amendment.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Speaking against, let's take, or let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Against? Abstaining? All right, that motion passes. 10, two, one.
Okay. The next amendment for discussion is about R1. I am, again, striking the suggested text and just saying, calibrate R1, single-family, small lot, floor area allotment. So it could be a number or a percentage to reflect current allotment of floor area allowed in minimum size equivalent single-family zone. And I'm going to amend that to say equivalent R2 zone, since we don't have single-family zone anymore. And what this is, is R1 was mapped where all small lot amnesty, substandard size, or where many of them, not all of them actually, are offered. And under current code, if you have an undersized lot and you're in a neighborhood that approved it, then you're allowed the same 2,300 square feet, which is .4 of a standard-sized lot, that an SF3 lot has. So what it does is that even as your lot size goes down, you're able to have a bigger as percentage, but not an absolute term size home on that lot. And you're given more impervious cover. The R1 zone kept all of those characteristics. So it's an equivalent zone, except it didn't keep the minimum square footage. It just kept it defined as a percentage. So that is downzoning and making now non-conforming a whole bunch of homes on small lots. Because if you have like a 2,500 square foot lot, which we have all over town, that's now a thousand square foot home that you can have. And a lot of people built, I heard from some architects, who built like 1,500, 1,800 square foot, small family homes on these things, now non-conforming. So the amendment is to take a look at this again and to consider giving it the same entitlement that it has now, which, you know, maybe it's 1,800, maybe it's 2,000. But to look at giving it a floor area allotment that is equivalent to what we have now, not downzone, since part of council's direction. to what we have now, not downzone, since part of council's direction, I believe, was to avoid downzoning where possible. That's the amendment. It's just fixing small lot amnesty lots.
Okay. Um, is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Zar. All right. And that was you speaking to it as well? Does staff want to chime in on that?
I, I think we agree that, that R1 zone needs to be looked at because of the issues raised by Commissioner Kenny. Not sure that we would agree that, uh, square footage limitation should be introduced, but we do agree that it needs to be reexamined.
Okay. Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna offer an amendment, because I'm not trying to do anything particular here to, I would say, um, calibrate R1, single-family, small lot, floor area allotment, um, to, keep existing, small lot amnesty homes compliant.
Could I have that one more time?
Uh, calibrate R1, single-family, small lot, floor area allotment. So whichever, which way, if there's a formula or whatever, to keep existing small lot amnesty homes compliant.
Greg, does that change your response?
Uh, I think that that, that sounds more in line with something that we were thinking.
Okay. Commissioner Zar, is that okay with you? All right. So we have, uh, Kenny Azar amendment, number 30. Are there questions?
Question for staff.
Okay.
So staff, in order to keep them compliant, is this the type of thing that you could say, like, on lots that were, whatever, developed at this date and prior, that they're held? I mean, I guess we've seen that in current code. Is that kind of like what we're thinking about, to keep those, current existing small lot amnesty, to keep their original rights? Yeah, grandfathering?
Right. So uses becoming compliant is, you're right, it's in the draft code for certain uses in certain zones, and, and it could be expanded to include other uses in other zones.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then any new ones that are zoned, then those fall under the, yeah, those are no longer grandfathered with those?
No. I have a question.
Is that the, the idea behind it?
Uh, yeah, something, something like that could be worked out, I think.
Okay. I think the intent behind the amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kenny, is to keep them conforming and compliant?
Um, yeah, I, I would say that whatever the zone design is, that you should look at stuff that's built under current small lot amnesty, and that type of stuff should remain legal.
Yes. And I think there's, there's probably a way that we can redesign the zone standards just to, so that when they're rezoned to R1, they will just be complying with those R1 standards.
So the, the intent statement, Commissioner Shea, offers, it just says keep them compliant. It could be through a process that you suggest, it could be through a change to the zone design. It's, it's ambiguous. Staff could go either way.
Other questions? Speaking for, or actually speaking against? Speaking for? Commissioner Seeger?
I was on the working group, and I was opposed to it because of the 1,800 square foot minimum. This sounds much better, and I do support it now.
Okay. Speaking against or neutral? Last commissioner speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, number 20.
Okay.
And then we will probably take a break. Commissioner Shea?
So, uh, item 20 has to do with, currently, under the draft code, uh, attics are exempted. And currently, current code has attic exemptions based upon, um, the space that's underneath. There's a difficult calculation on what, whether it gets exempted or not. And what we're, what, the intent of what we're trying to do with what this is, was to calculate area of a home based upon what IRC, International Residential Code, says. So you have six-foot eight for like hallways and bathrooms, and anything above seven, seven foot and above for, um, habitable spaces, and that actually gets calculated in the amount of how, you know, so you know how big the unit is. And the reason for this is so we can be honest with what the square footage is really, and especially with smaller lots that we have, there are a lot of attic exemptions that would not be able to be possible under new code, because how narrow potentially these lots can get. The concern that I have was when we do these attic exemptions, then, um, we also increase the size of the units to the point where, I mean, we might be exempting it in our calculations when we permit it, but in reality, when you sell that unit and you have an extra, you know, instead of it's a, you know, let's say 1,200 square foot thing that gets permitted, but reality, it's a 16 or 1700 square foot, I mean, that still amounts to considerable more cost for that. Because when I sell that, when we list it on, uh, the MLS, you know, they're gonna account for every square footage. And if the whole point with these smaller lots is to have smaller units, then this allows us to honestly be able to kind of keep track of it, um, and, and know what size that is. So this is basically to go ahead and count, um, all spaces, um, including, well, basically, this is to count the attic space that is above six, eight, and seven foot as part of the calculation for floor area ratio. Any questions?
Could you, could you just read the motion itself, just word for word?
Okay. In calculating floor area ratio, remove attic exemptions and count all conditioned square footage, six-foot, eight-tall and above counts toward FAR.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Seeger. Staff?
Staff does have a perspective on this they'd like to share.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So we originally wanted to exclude attics from the FAR calculation altogether, in part because it's, it's a complicated calculation today. People who have existing attics who want to finish them out and it, and don't understand why they can't, because it doesn't change the character of their house at all. And we thought maybe it would help in accommodating internal ADUs as well, these, an additional floor attic space as another unit. But we understand that, that it does affect the massing for new construction as well. So I, I don't want to say that we're totally opposed to it. I think there might be some middle ground there, and I don't, I couldn't possibly parse that out right now, but.
And, and some of the conversations was that, go ahead and count the space, but we can also tweak the FAR, right? So everything gets counted.
Yeah.
But you tweak the FAR, should you bump it up? And honestly, this is really, so we can manage affordability versus somebody, you know, let's say, like I said, when we permit it, it says it's a 1,100 square foot, but when I sell it, I'm selling it as a 1,500, 1,600 square foot. And that's very different on what that's gonna call, you know, sell for when I, you know, put it on MLS. And if the whole point was that we're trying to get that, smaller units, exempting attics just blows it open. And as you know, I mean, basically with, um, the draft code, we've unlocked a third floor for, I mean, pretty much all types. So I think we need to consider how we calibrate that at this point.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Kenny, then Shaw, then Anderson?
Um, so, uh, to what degree did your, or was the attic exemptions incorporated into the assumptions when you did your modeling and testing for these zones? Was, were the attic exemptions incorporated into the modeling and testing of these zones? So when you looked at, like, is .6 enough for duplex, or how many people are gonna build this fourplex? Because I have it secondhand that it was.
Okay, yeah.
Just wanted to confirm that.
I think we'd have to look at the testing models again and, and get back to you.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
I think your question was, in, in a general sense, was it ignored, or was it included in the modeling? Or you don't have that answer, we don't know that off the top?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm drawing a blank. I would just have to refresh my memory with the models.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw, then Anderson?
Just because this isn't my area of expertise, but so if you build a taller, I guess the concern is we're building taller attic spaces that can one day be converted or used for actually living space? No? Okay. I guess, I'm...
I mean, you, you could build it, you could just build it and have it as living space. It doesn't, whether it's converted or not, I mean, but the thing is, the way that it's, the way that the new code is, it has, it unlocks that third story anyway. It used to be very limited, and it's quite, um, open now on what gets exempted. And so because of that, then I think there needs to be a recalibration, just because it's really gonna fit predictable affordability, just because based on the, the square footage of units that can be increased by.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Kenny, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, so my understanding, having looked into this a bit, is that, uh, you know, current code allows you to, I get, I guess, get 50% of your, um, of your roofline can have a, an attic exemption, um, under a gable to add square footage?
It has to be 50% or more that is under a certain height, and if you, if you don't fit that number, then it, it doesn't work.
Right.
So usually it works only when you start having a much wider building. So when you get smaller and smaller lots, I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work so much to get that exemption.
Right. But is it fair to say that, um, under current code, that there is a lot of stuff that fits under attic exemptions and results in square footage that is in excess of the 0.4 FAR?
Under the current code, I would say yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Shaw, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Um, okay. Commissioner Anderson? No. Anyone else? Okay, speaking against? You speaking against? Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I, I initially supported this amendment because I don't like shenanigans in general, and I'm generally anti-shenanigan. But, uh, I, I spoke to some architects who were very concerned because they said that this was included in all the modeling, and that, um, it would substantially hurt, especially when they're trying to squeeze more units in. So like your R4, you know, stuff like that, and that we would have to change the modeling on the capacity if we did this. So then my second instinct was, hey, well, since we're doing it now, and if we don't want to downzone, why don't we increase the FAR? And, you know, across the board, and, and get rid of these attic exemptions. Unfortunately, in my estimation, in the, um, the communications ecosystem that we're in, and with a lot of actors being really unabashed about pumping a lot of disinformation out there about the code, I think that is just gonna be pitched as, hey, they're making Austin unaffordable by jacking up FAR, when really we're just trying to account for something that's already done in current code, and just trying to make it a little bit more true to form. So I just don't think that we're in the political atmosphere where we can make a move like that without sowing mass public confusion. So, um, and in order for this not to be a downzoning and not to make the multi-unit things hurt, we would have to bump the FAR. So, um, so I, I feel like we're kind of in a trap, and are, may just have to kind of accept the current shenanigans that are happening, because it's what happens now.
Okay, speaking for? Commissioner Seeger?
I, I'm speaking for it because this is habitable living space that we're building. Whenever we build this type of space, it's counted towards our square footage. I don't understand why we would want to omit it. It also, because we were talking about losing dwelling units, but we're not. If there's encouragement, and I hope there is, even though it, you know, it will cost more money on taxes, that these attics are converted, and we do have ADUs or accessory apartments or whatever, that the true value is captured. Coming from the same mindset as James, from the real estate, uh, real estate perspective, we are absolutely going to claim that a three-story house is a three-story house with all of this square footage. And why we would agree to hiding this habitable square footage, I don't understand. And that's my comment, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Okay, speaking against or neutral? Commissioner, and Commissioner Yanis Polito, neutral? Okay.
So, I appreciate the staff clarification that you run up on this when, um, when someone wants to, for example, refinish an attic and doesn't understand why they can't, because that adds FAR, or if somebody wanted to create an internal ADU, for example, with the additional attic space. I would be supportive of, um, exempting attics in those circumstances if we could really, I mean, if it was going to encourage internal ADUs, and that was the function, it was an actual unit that's potentially affordable rental, then I would be open to it. But by itself, the attic exemption, I think, is harmful for the reasons stated.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson speaking against?
And hopefully with this new code, we have enough housing types, so we don't have to worry about the games being played. That I'm hearing is this being something that we want to avoid. But, um, at the end, it just, it just seems like an overcomplication. I've been in a lot of attics, spraying them down for, you know, putting in an extra insulation and whatnot. It's a job I did back in the day. And it just starts to add this weird complication, because I've been in a lot of attics that were, you know, eight and nine feet tall, but then there's a joist every here and there, and then does that count? Does that not count? It just, it just seems messy, and I'd like to avoid this.
Uh, last commissioner speaking for? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those against? One, two, three, four, five, six. Abstaining? All right, so that fails 6-6-1. Um, commissioners, we're gonna take this next section as well, and then call for a break. So let's do impervious cover. Both are consent, that's great.
Okay, two consent.
We're taking them together?
We're taking them together. Note, there's no suggested text, so this is intent. And we did, um, do some compromising within our group to try and come up with intent language that we thought was acceptable, um, to everybody. So, uh, first one is to revise the R4 impervious cover to be graduated by unit count. Currently, it's just a flat 50% for all forms. So it's keep impervious cover at R2s 45% for one to two units. Um, and then there's just a note that other amendments may lower the impervious count for one unit, and consider increasing impervious cover to greater than 50% under the bonus configuration to make the bonus more viable in more locations. Um, and I will note that in AIA's evaluation, they said that it was the impervious cover in the FAR, should read IC and FAR there, um, that made, uh, the bonus very unlikely to be taken in R4. And I believe the staff modeling shows that there's not a lot of units that they're projecting there. So, um, we really wanted to make this, uh, something where, um, maybe you're not even intending to build all four units, or all six, or eight units, rather, but maybe you make one unit affordable to get that extra impervious cover. Um, and it is also our hope that by decreasing it at lower unit counts, we don't incentivize just two units to be built on R4, we incentivize more than two. And that also, this balances out, because you're not gonna be able to get that full 50% with just one to two units. So that can allow people taking the bonus to maybe go to that higher IC, and you don't have a net increase. Um, and then related to that is a, a new one that we have, um, which is to reduce the impervious cover for single units. In all zones where 45%, um, so where it's 45%, down to 40% or 2,250, whichever is greater. So for, um, and I believe that kicks in at about, uh, lots that are below about 5,700 square feet. Um, rebounds to 45% that it is now with ADU duplex or other two-unit form, and establish rules that grandfather in current level of impervious cover for current owners, so that their properties are not non-compliant, that expires when it's sold. Um, so the idea here is that for R2s, we're trying to do a lot of things to encourage ADUs and duplexes to be built, and this would further, uh, encourage, um, those, that second unit to be built.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, is there a second? Second by Shay. Staff?
So staff agrees with the generally graduated approach to impervious cover by unit. But in the R4 zone, I think we would really prefer to keep it capped at 50 max, but understand going down to 45 for 1 and 2 units.
And staff, it also says on the other one, potentially going down to 40. 40% if you just do a single unit. Are you okay with that consideration?
On the other one, yeah, I think we're, we don't oppose going down to 40%. The 2250 impervious cover for R2s, I think we prefer just to have a percentage rather than a square footage, flat square footage for those zones.
And I think Commissioner Kenny can explain why we have that minimum. I think it's, that's a 20, isn't that for the...
That essentially keeps it at 45, at the existing 45% for lots that are smaller than 5,600 square feet. Just so that's a little bit more viable for very small lots. But I don't think that's central to the purpose of the amendment.
Does that change your response, Greg?
I think that, not really. I think that, again, if we scaled it, we would still prefer a percentage to scale. The way it's written here, we were thinking that it would mean that 2250 of actual impervious cover on smaller lots would raise it above 45, even potentially. And we were opposed to that. But if that's not the intent, if 45 is the intent to cap it, then I think we'd be more amenable to that.
Basically, as we get, as the lots get much smaller, we don't want to keep it at that point four, and it keeps getting limited because as you get smaller, you actually need, still need more space, right? So as it gets smaller, we don't want to limit it. So you could even say, after this size, it goes back to 45%. So, yeah, so we can do that.
That would be the intent, and just the math is, is that 45% of a 5,000 square foot minimum lot is exactly 2250. So it never goes above what it is now.
Got it. Okay, and then just a clarification to my, to Commissioner Kenny. The expires when lot is sold, I mean, that's not something we talked about. Also, I don't know if we should tie it in with the sale of a property because once it's built, it's, it's there and it has been. So the whole grandfathering is based upon the existence on the building, not about the sale. So we pay with removing that.
I think you have to make a motion, but yes.
Okay, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to...
Strike the parenthetical?
Yeah.
Sure, I second.
Okay.
Can I make a substitute to that to add on?
Substitute to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and it's pretty simple. As Commissioner Shay mentioned, that as the lots get smaller, you really need more IC. I've received calls today about small lot, people owning properties that are very small lots and taking it down to 40% means that they cannot add on to their homes. I'd like to propose that there be a very simple process that 45% IC can be grandfathered in if requested or automatic. And also remove the 2250 from the intent.
So we have the phrase in there right now that says, establish rules that grandfather in current levels of impervious cover. You're talking about additions that go above 45%?
No, I'm just talking about 45%. And make the process very easy.
Right, I just want to clarify, are you talking about keeping existing stuff compliant? Or people who want to do additions to their homes that takes them above 45%?
No, I'm talking about, there are, say, 40% today, they want to add a bedroom so that they could take advantage of the 45% through a very simple grandfathering process.
So Brent Lloyd, I, I think the intent, the intent is clear as for these law, these smaller lots that are over impervious cover to be able to retain their existing rights and build up to them if they have capacity left. And I think that if that's your overall intent, we can work with that and we'll, we'll work to find a way to, to implement that. But definitely, as was mentioned, we should not be attempting, we, we would advise you not to attempt to tie anything to the sale of property.
Right.
But I think otherwise, your intent is clear and we can find a way, find a way to work with that.
Okay, thank you.
So we're on a substitute amendment by Commissioner Seeger to strike the last parentheses, but also to do what?
I, I like the way that Brent just explained it. It was much more clear that there be a process where current properties with 45% IC that are under the IC can still go up to 45% IC if this is approved to move it down to 40%.
So this is like the other one that we talked about, of being able to grandfather?
Right. To be, have a process that's very clear, very easy, et cetera.
And can I suggest you just say, we just end it with establish rules that grandfather in current allocation of impervious cover?
Yeah.
Period?
Yes, and take out everything after, don't even talk about non-compliant, et cetera.
Right. Just say, establish rules that grandfather in current allocation of impervious cover.
Yep.
Yep.
And then are we going to remove the square footage? Because I know that's something that...
Yes, we have to.
Okay, so we'll take out the square footage. Can you make that part of your amendment also?
I certainly will.
I think you did, okay. So scratch 2250, current level, or current allocation of impervious cover, and scratch everything else.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a motion by Seeger, seconded by, I don't have a second yet. Second by Schneider. So this is the substitute amendment to the Shay-Kenny amendment. Any questions?
Sure, did we miss the opportunity to split these? Because I'm, I'm conflicted on...
Yes, you're, you're welcome to split it.
I would suggest after we do the substitute, then split.
Okay. Questions? Speaking against? Speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. So the other amendment goes away, we're back to Kenny Shay. So now is the time to split, if you'd like, Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, I would like to split because I have concerns.
Is there a second?
I will agree to split.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Seeger. So Todd Shaw and Patricia Seeger to split. Any questions to split? Questions about the split? About the whole thing? So let's vote on the split and then you can have a question about it.
So I have a question on the split.
Okay.
Because I think the split, we said that if we vote on one, then that would take precedence over the other if it covers the same thing. So should we take 35 first? Because on number four, it does say R2s 1 to 2 units, when I think for 35, we're talking about single units.
So it's Kenny Shay amendments, both of them, you guys can pick either one. Let's just get the split first.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. So Shaw, Seeger, any other questions? We're just voting to split. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All those against? And abstaining? Okay. Eight, two, one, and then two of them don't care. Which two of them don't care? How many of you are, four to split? Raise your hands, please. One, two, three...
Four to split?
Yeah, four to split. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, against? Nine, three, one. Got it. Okay. 35.
35 first.
Okay, 35 first. Kenny Shay, any questions?
We've already had questions for staff, so we're into questions.
Yeah.
Well, so we had on our agenda today the briefing about impervious cover, and it was particularly because I was hoping we could get that background information and ask questions about what difference a 5% change makes and what we should be considering. You know, we do hear that it's nominal in terms of contributing to flooding in an extreme rain event. Well, that's true when you have eight feet of water flowing over everything. You know, the 5% impervious cover is not going to change that maybe at that point. There's actually more evidence to show that it does have an impact, but the impact's not going to be as big as the extreme rain event. But cumulative and localized flooding and prolonged rain events, these things make a huge difference. And I was really hoping to have that Q and A before we started voting on impervious cover items. I'm just wondering if there's, if we don't pause on this until we hear that presentation, which I understand is now postponed until the 12th, when we're supposed to be doing final votes, can we at least reserve the right to revisit impervious cover as a topic on the 12th?
Commissioners? I know we had that set up and I think we were ready, but I don't, I think maybe she was delayed?
No, she was here. She was told.
No, I mean, we, we called for her name and she wasn't here.
Oh, at the very beginning?
Yeah.
Because her item was after Citizens Communication.
Yes.
Oh, so Citizens were still testifying.
They were testifying on, on, they were testifying on, they weren't Citizens Communication, they were testifying on this item. That's what happened.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we had already started, so. But yeah, we, I agree, we could have used, used some background on this.
So we do have staff from Watershed here, if I'm not mistaken. So if we have any questions, we can ask.
Yeah.
And I certainly don't want to undermine staff's expertise, but there, it's concerning to me that there are repeated comments made about impervious cover not having a huge impact on flooding. So this was, you know, a, a pretty leading expert in the field. You probably know Dr. Ross, she does work for the city, in fact, on contract. And I have asked, what basis is there for the statement that impervious cover changes don't contribute to flooding? And her answer is, nothing. There's absolutely nothing. All of the evidence is to the contrary. And it depends on which watershed we're talking about because most of our watersheds drain to the Colorado River or to Lady Bird Lake. But some of our watersheds drain from west to east, and that's particularly true about Onion Creek and Williamson Creek. That's particularly where a lot of our low-income, mixed-income flood-prone areas are. And I would really like to know if there's an analysis being made because we have property, we have not just the R zones changing this, you know, 5% here and there, 45 to 50, 50 to 55 to 60. But there are a number of, of proposed upzonings that, that put commercial designations with way higher impervious cover allowances. And so how are y'all treating this? I mean, even Matt, I was surprised to hear Matt Holland say, it contributes to erosion, but not necessarily flooding. Can you talk about the outside of an extreme Harvey-type rain event, which I know we have more of, but just in general in our flood-prone areas where we have a lot of localized flooding? Can you speak to that?
I can. Andrea Bates with the Watershed Protection Department. I know it's not intuitive and we're really proud with the connections that Austin residents make with impervious cover and flooding. But when we're talking about the potential impacts of these incremental increases, especially in the transition zones, to the extent that they are mapped, and the percent of the increase in relationship to the drainage area and the watershed as a whole, our modeling indicates that that incremental residential bump does not have a meaningful effect on local flood problem areas simply because those problems are caused primarily by the size of the storm drain or drainage system and the not being primarily driven by that level of impervious cover increase. As you point out, there is a slight increase in our modeling that we found for the smaller rain events, and it diminishes for the larger rain events. And so our messaging on that is that impervious cover increases of the level that we are considering, especially as related to the transition zones, will not make local flood problem areas significantly worse based on our knowledge and the modeling that we've done. We have also done an analysis of impervious cover maximum changes proposed by the current draft code and map. And we had a little bit of information about that in the October 4th staff report and have just completed a longer explanation of the analysis and watershed-by-watershed results. And so we are releasing that on the LDC revision website probably this week. And so you can look for watershed-level information about potential increases which would reflect not only the transition zone areas, but any other changes for commercial properties or existing multifamily properties.
Thank you. So I'll just add, I'm, I'm not a leading expert. I don't have a PhD, but I did do an analysis with different lot sizes, different slopes, and different impervious covers. And the difference between 45 and 60 was 4%. 4% of 45, of the runoff at 45%. And I was gonna, I was gonna share that. I was looking forward to Dr. Ross's presentation as well. I can, I can bring that, so whatever that's worth. I did not look at, though, I did not look at the smaller events. I only looked at the 100-year event. So there could be something there. Anyway, so we have a request to either revisit impervious cover or take these up later after the presentation. I'm open to a motion and looking at what, how folks think.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we always have the ability to revisit an item?
No.
No?
We're not going to go back. Any other thoughts?
I would just say that I, I was against the split because I think these two go together and that the hopeful net impact of all of them is actually negligible or neutral in terms of changes in impervious cover. So if, I would be open to, and, and I think we could maybe, uh, strike the, or, or move to suspend the rules for a motion on impervious cover on the 12th if, if commissioners want to do that. But I think this is pretty inherent to housing capacity and particularly affordable housing. I'd like to move forward.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
So, this issue is very important to the community. And I think anytime we're talking about increasing impervious cover, you know, we want staff to go back and look at how that affects the IC in that watershed. So I don't, you know, I would want them to go look at what this will then do to the watershed level, the IC in that watershed if we, you know, pick a number of 60 or whatever it is and then model it. Because one of the criteria was we were not going to exceed watershed ICs and in, we weren't going to exceed the total for, for the Austin area. So I'm just, I just see another iteration of examination here if we're, because I am in certain cases. I think we should look at maybe bumping up that IC, but I just, we need to be ready to model it and live up to the other commitments that were in that 5-2 directive. So I'm just a little leery of, you know, making these motions at this point.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question on, on the scheduling? Is it the presenter isn't available tomorrow or it's not noticed for tomorrow?
Azlan Hinchvera is here where the agenda was posted last week, so it is not noticed for tomorrow.
Did we have, did we have backup? Did we have a presentation as a backup?
I don't think so.
Yes, we have.
Oh.
Okay, so we have a presentation as a backup.
But if, if she were available tomorrow, would we be able to question her? Can we question people?
We have a backup, so we can go.
I mean, she can, she can...
We could suspend our rules to allow questions during this item.
She can do communication at the beginning of the session. Three minutes, she gets three minutes to do a presentation. And then if we have additional questions on that, while we're discussing, can we not ask her more questions?
Possibly. Commissioners? I'm going to suggest that we take a break now and, and revisit this with refreshed stomachs and, and minds. Does that sound, is there opposition to that, Commissioner Azar?
I'm sorry, can I ask two questions?
You're keeping us all from...
Well, I can do that, okay, fine.
Okay, all right, let's, let's take a, let's take a break. How about, what do you think, 30 minutes? Okay. Okay, we'll say 20. We'll be back in 30, okay. All right, so recess at 7:53. Okay, we've got a quorum on the dais. We're missing Commissioner Yanis Pulido, she's walking down. All right, it is 8:30, just like we said. We're gonna pick up where we left off, impervious cover. Are we postponing these couple of items or not? I think we can arrange for the speaker, if she's available tomorrow, to speak during citizens communication, and then we can also ask her questions after, like during, after we have motions and so on.
And can I ask staff to look at these motions, and as best as you can, I know it's hard to look at how, if, in R4, that today has 50%, if we were to drop down one unit to 40% and two units to 45%, if we were able to go up to 60%, and I specifically ask about 60, because a lot of the architects that I talked to think 60% is necessary to get four units, that if that would end up being a wash, or if it would actually increase impervious cover.
Yes, we're gonna try to look into that. I don't know what the timeframe will be for getting an answer, but yeah, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Did you say something about any timeframe?
Well, we're gonna talk about it tomorrow. I don't know if you can consult with the architect that you work with on the modeling. I know AIA also seems to be of the opinion that 50% is too low for the bonus to ever be taken in R4, so.
And I think that where staff is, is that we feel comfortable with a 50% cap in R4, but if it's taken in tandem with the 45 to 40%, we might feel more comfortable recommending more in R4.
And maybe even dropping down to 40 for one unit.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah, because I would think, I would guess that dropping down to 40 for one unit in all zones would be, have a substantial effect, but even if you just restricted it to R4, there would be some effect there. Okay, thank you.
So I see this leading toward us taking up these impervious cover-related items tomorrow, after the presentation likely, if, if the presentation, if she's not able to present, I will present her backup, or maybe staff can help present her backup.
I mean, I was really hoping for the Q and A opportunity, especially with the, I haven't looked at the presentation, I don't know how user-friendly it is.
Yes, and, and if, if, I just, I just, I don't, I don't want to take these to November 12th, so I wanna, trying to, trying to vote on these by tomorrow.
Sure, I mean, if you're looking for a motion, I'm just moved to permanently table these. I don't want to vote on these.
What does permanently table mean? Never take them up?
Yeah, in other words, not vote them down, but definitely not vote for them.
Okay. All right, is that a motion?
Permanently table.
I think that's a strike.
Strike.
Is there a...
I'm not, I don't know what the, the motion is I'm looking for here.
I don't know if, could we make a motion to, we could table the whole process, but I don't know if that motion would be, would be something we could take, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hold off on that. The question I want to ask is, in non-residential, are there many impervious cover-related amendments?
I don't think there's any.
None, okay, are there any after these two?
No.
Okay.
Sure. So I, but I, it would be a really neat package if we had this combined with the process changes we're considering for relieving these, you know, having a different kind of alignment of three to eight, or one to three with requirements for limited site plan. I think we have other considerations for higher impervious cover, being able to go under limited site plan, and I just feel like that, that kind of, when we're talking about these zones and their IC and the processes around them, that would be a really sweet spot to kind of be able to bring those all in at the same time, because I think we're making decisions that later we're gonna have amendments that we might go, oh, well, if I would have known that, I might have voted differently. You know what I mean? So I think it's important to talk about some of the process items related to these zones under limited site plan as well. It would be good to push, bring them closer, maybe at the same time?
So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we table these two items until at some point during the process working group, which will not be tonight, so.
Okay.
Because, because I agree with Commissioner Shaw saying.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Is there any other help that we need from staff tomorrow regarding this item? I know there was some conversation about whether impervious cover is being increased by watershed, or...
In, along those same veins, if we can make sure to have watershed prepared to talk about the kinds of alternative compliances or alternative reviews that can be done as part of the three-to-eight unit residential site review, because if there are, as Commissioner Shaw was saying, increased oversight, like right now you get your 45%, and nobody looks at it, right? But if there was some layer of oversight there, then maybe a higher than 50% could be more amenable. So if they could just be prepared to speak to those items within process, then I think they'd be prepared to talk about this.
Okay, that and anything else? Commissioner Shaw, did you want to, need any support with regard to impervious cover within watersheds, or how they're increased or decreased?
Oh, I, no, I'm not sure, maybe the information is out there, but I don't know if we've, I think it's forthcoming is what I heard, that we're actually gonna have data on the watershed ICs and the total IC for the, for Austin, total Austin area, and I think that's important, we can kind of gauge whether or not we're right on the cusp, or if we're, we have room to spare.
Okay, so if that data is available, or portions of it are available, we'd love to see some of it tomorrow if possible. All right, so there's a motion by Commissioner Kenny, is there a second? Secondly, by Commissioner Shaw, let's take a vote on postponing this until the right time during the process working group. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously, let's go over to...
All right.
...the next set of consent.
Form requirements. So this is about garages and parking adjustments in R zones. This is a consent item with a couple other consent items, so we'll just work through these. And again, this, these had unanimous consent between Commissioner Sheger and Shay, and, and Thompson and, no, I'm sorry, not Thompson, Schneider and myself, so getting the four of us to agree on anything is pretty, pretty good. And we made a lot of compromises to get there. So, adjust garage and parking restrictions to allow more flexibility on, of placement for garages, this is the guy we're talking about, but restore the garage, actually, you can strike that, but restore the garage size exemption cap, because we already dealt with that. So there are three sub-items to this, and, and to be clear, the current draft says that garages have to be placed behind, at or behind the facade of the, of the building frontage, and that they can be no more than wide than 50% of the non-parking building width, which ends up being about 30%, really. So, we say, okay, allow the garages to come forward of the building facade if it forms one side of an engaged, two-sides enclosed front porch. So it can be the, the part of the L, if there's a porch between that L, and that would be the exception to garages not being required to be at or behind. B, increase front yard impervious cover restriction from 45 to 50. Currently, there is no restriction on that in code. The draft has it down, has it at 45, and stakeholders we talked to said, if you could just get that up to 50, that would help a whole lot. And then C is change the 50% limit of building frontage allowed for parking, garage door, from 50% of non-parking frontage, effectively making it 33%, to 50% of the entire building, making it effectively 50%. This is especially important for the narrower lots and narrower forms that we're gonna be seeing more of, allowed under the draft code. The next item, number eight, is...
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Can I ask if it makes more sense to staff, for staff to address each one, so they're not kind of...
Sure, yeah.
...addressing six at a time?
And, but we'll do the commissioner stuff later. Great, okay, let's do that.
So with that item, staff does not oppose any of those items?
Okay, okay. And just a reminder, commissioners, you can ask questions after. Number eight is the double lot form, for all R zones with a units-per-lot standard, which is all the current R zones, create a double lot set of allowed forms for all but townhouse and attach those at forms, so, in other words, this would apply to single-family, duplex, and multifamily forms, that allows double the number of units, and only the number of units, if, A, it has a lot, has the minimum, has double the minimum lot area, so that would go from 5,000 to 10,000, and B, a width of the minimum standard width, which right now is 45 feet, plus the minimum width needed for a flag lot, which I believe can be as low as 15 feet. Limit it to two lots, maximum building width is unchanged, all other standards, impervious cover, FAR, XERIS, and VEX still apply. So what this does is it kills the incentive to do flag lots on two lots, because instead you can just build it as, as one, and get double the number of units. It doesn't actually add any density, because you, you only get the units if you could subdivide it into a flag lot, but flag lots are expensive and disruptive and bad for a whole lot of reasons. So, next one is the cottage court form, making it practical.
Let him, let him respond real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So just to clarify with the item that you were just describing, it would be on one lot that is just twice the size of a...
Yes, that is one lot that it would be eligible to split into two, and so, so you have this currently for the three cottage court, three, and then if you have double the size, you can do the cottage court six and have twice as many units? It's doing that, but doing it for a single-family, duplex, multifamily?
Okay. I think in concept, yeah, that sounds like something that we could look at, maybe, might be some limitation on the number, on how big that lot could be, like, maybe not, maybe at twice the size, but not if it's like three, or five, or seven times the size.
The intent restricts us just to two.
Just to two, okay.
So it's not triple, quadruple, it's not a multiplier, it's just double.
Just two, okay. Yeah, I think that, that we'd definitely be open to looking at that in concept.
Okay. The next one is cottage court forms, the intent language says remove form requirements, especially on the three-unit form, that make it difficult to achieve, especially on smaller lots. This is consistent with the AIA feedback, and what we are suggesting is, language is to keep the requirements that there is a 200-square-foot unit, per-unit courtyard-size minimum, that courtyards can't be used for vehicular access or parking, that units must front the common courtyard or the street, that there must be a pedestrian connection linking each building to the public right-of-way, court, and parking area, and that buildings must be separated by a minimum of six feet. But we are suggesting to remove requirements, and we're not sure if this is an error or something, that there be a 1,500-square-foot minimum area, which didn't seem to line up with the 200 square feet, remove that buildings, that a courtyard must have buildings on two sides of the courtyard, remove the requirement that the courtyard cannot be in the front or side-street setback, to remove the requirement that on a quarter lot, corner lot, units adjacent to the side-street must front both the courtyard and the street, and remove the requirement that parking must be clustered and may not be provided adjacent to or attached to an individual unit.
We are definitely in agreement that the courtyard cottage court regulations need to be looked at for feasibility and flexibility. I don't know that we could speak to the specific language here, but for sure in concept, totally agree.
It's just suggested text.
Yeah.
Commissioner, just clarify that suggested is not part of the motion, or is it?
You know what? How about we just strike it for simplicity's sake?
Yeah.
Does that sound good? Patricia?
So staff can look at it, it's just not part of the motion?
Might start there. All right. Next one, number 10, clarify entitlements for multiple forms. Right now, all of the entitlements are tied to just one type of form on a lot, but according to the number of units, you could maybe have multiple, so if there's a ADU and a duplex, or two duplexes, or duplex in a single family, just a, there's a lot of confusion about what FAR you might have, or things like that, if you have a mix of those forms.
Agree.
Okay. And then, three more consent items. One is adopt a townhouse-style zero-interior-side setback option, i.e., you can put your building right up to the side, interior-side setback, for other forms when two contiguous R3 and R4 lots are being developed. The maximum building mass width facade, however you want to define it, of 90 feet applies. Fire codes and other restrictions still apply and are not superseded, so this says if you have two adjacent R3 or R4, and you want to do cottage courts with a cottage right up to the lot line, or one multifamily building, or townhouses that go all the way across two lots, that's fine, but any of the maximum building widths still apply.
I think we agree in concept, yes.
Okay. And this basically just allows flexibility for where you place the buildings. Number 14, allow two curb cuts, current code restricts it to one, in the bonus configuration only of R4 and RM1 zones. When it's on the all-ages-all-abilities bicycle network or bicycle priority network, the additional curb cut is at the discretion of the Austin Transportation Director. So this just gives some flexibility with figuring out how to do your parking and street access, if you're trying to do those multiple lots on small lot, or multiple units on small lots.
Is this a code item?
It could be a code item, it's more likely a criteria manual item. I think in theory, we agree with minimum curb cuts, especially if you're increasing density. I think we would want to look into the size of, you know, scaling it with the side, with the number of units and the flexibility of the design. I'm starting, thinking, in theory, we agree. I think we can make that work, as long as there's an ability to do a second one, but the intent is to make sure there's a little extra level of effort, because curb cuts, you know, do degrade the perception and reality of safety on the, on the, on the route.
How about we say discourage on the all-ages-all-abilities bicycle network, period. Additional curb cut is always at the discretion of the Austin Transportation Director.
We can work with that.
Does that work with you guys?
Not, not opposed to that recommendation.
Commissioner Shay, is that okay with you?
Sounds good.
Okay. And the feedback we just got there is that when you're, they're trying to figure out, they're gonna still park these things, even though they're within the transportation priority network zone, and if we can get some flexibility on that, that might help the viability. And, and then as well, it becomes an incentive for the bonus, because it's only available if you're in that bonus configuration. And then finally, allow the use of a manufactured home on rural residential zoning, and we did just want to note that many resident, rural residential zones have restrictive covenants or septic conditions that wouldn't allow that to happen, but if those do, and you're way out there, you can use a manufactured home.
And, and just to clarify, this is, since it's in an R, R zone, this is just the manufactured home as the dwelling unit?
As on the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Agree. Okay, so that's all.
Okay. All right, so motion by Kenny, second, by Seeger. Let's start with questions, either to the working group or to staff. Commissioner Shaw, then Yanis Pulido.
This is just a question for staff. So cottage court to me means it's a certain thing, I mean, it's a certain style or format, so I guess we, what we're looking for is maybe more flexibility in arranging units, and so I just don't know what it matter, if it's three, six, maybe you can get four on there, and get four smaller units in, you know, some kind of configuration. So I just wonder if cottage court, though, it just, it has a certain form that you're trying to, you know, that you're, in the code, that we're trying to use?
It does, and, and, in the draft code, for sure, it's an arrangement around a courtyard with clustered parking, but we have heard a lot of feedback that even to achieve that form, there needs to be more flexibility with some of the sizes and minimum size requirements. So we, we've heard a lot even before tonight about just the need to reexamine that.
So is, is it really three or six? I mean, those are the only two I... I mean, those are the only two options currently?
Right, yes, and we've, and we've heard feedback too about scaling that.
Okay, thanks, that would, I think that would be good.
Commissioner Yanis Polido?
Yeah, I just had a question about rural residential, because I think there's an assumption that all rural residential is way out there. And actually, there's some, in some of our, well, I wouldn't call them central, but now, areas where you have, for example, transition zones. So I'm thinking in particular, the southeast neighborhood plan has rural residential in it. So if we are allowing manufactured housing on site by right, what would the difference be? I mean, I guess, yeah, what, what parameters are we changing?
So actually, it's really, I would look at this amendment as a reinforcement of what you can do today. You can put a manufactured home on a, on a residential lot as long as it meets the, the building code. It's got permanent foundation and it's got utilities hooked up. So it's, it's something that you can do.
So I was just, I'm curious as to what this would change?
It's defined as a different use, and that use is not listed as allowed.
Yes, so the, the, as a use, it refers to the, the, really the park use.
Okay.
And, but the, the unit itself, manufactured home itself, can be used as a, as a dwelling unit in other zones.
Okay, that might be worth clarifying.
Okay.
So that's, you can put a manufactured home on R2s right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, just, and, and again, just as that dwelling unit, not, not as the park, manufactured home park use, but that as a dwelling unit, yes.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and pull that one down then to not make it look like we're treating resident, rural residential differently than R2 or anything like that.
Can we do that as an amendment? Strike it out?
I've moved that we strike amendment number 36 from this package.
Is there a second? Second by Shay. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, so we're striking number 36. Okay, other questions? Commissioner Shay?
So if we start eroding the requirements on cottage courts, do we end up approaching the tools that you're talking about? Something in the last supplemental, you talked about coming up with new tools to deal with SF5s and SF6 style? Does it seem like it's, if we start eroding the number of units and how we can position it, does it end up being like that new tool that we're talking about?
It would, it would be closer to that, I think. I think if it kept some of the requirements about the configuration, it would still be a distinctive use and might be typically more allowed on smaller lots than that SF5, 6 replacement, if you will.
Okay, but this gives you enough direction to make sure that the viability of the different products are definitely separate. I mean, it's, it's, right, I guess I don't want to erode it so much that you might as well do an SF5 or SF6, like the new one, okay?
It, right, the cottage court intent is, is still there.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, Commissioners speaking against. Speaking for. Commissioner Layton Burrow.
Yeah, thank you. I figured as long as I'm here tonight, I might as well say something. So with this notion that we're going to be driving less, that cars are going to be less important, and that, you know, transit is, is going to be the way that people get around. The, the idea of taking what's in the current code and is adopted by a lot of neighborhood plans, where garage placement was especially important because in a lot of neighborhoods that were built before 1960s, they were not car-centric. That was not the presentation of the houses to the street. That's why they're more walkable, that's why they have nice shaded yards. And, and so this, this, for me, it's the antithesis of what it is that we're, on one hand, saying that we're trying to do with, again, not making cars important anymore. And yet, if you put a garage on the front of a house, and, and that's what we started to see in our neighborhood, which is why when neighborhood plan came along, we adopted and, and, and Mr. Dutton here was helpful when, after neighborhoods had adopted the garage placement tool, because the new things that were coming in looked like something that was out of the 1980s or later. And it started to change the fabric of neighborhoods. And so if infill and all is going to be part of the fabric of a neighborhood, unless the neighborhoods just don't matter anymore. But if that's the case, then you need to just say that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners speaking for. Against. Okay, let's take a vote. This is Kenny Sieger. It's six, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 14. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, everyone? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so that motion carries 12 01.
Okay, we have, we're going on to new zones now. Have a couple of consent items. And just want to note that in none of these are we actually explicitly calling on this to be mapped. We're just asking that they be created on the zoning table. So the first one is a new R2, R2 zone, R2D maybe, that bonuses up to four units within the R2B tent. This was something that was somewhat implicitly asked for by transitions and affordability. It's a new R zone, the purpose is to, intended to, and this is important for the, the purpose section, intended to maintain a house-style aesthetic in areas well-served by transit, can serve as a transition between R2 and more intense zoning, base entitlements of two units with an affordable housing bonus up to four units. The base has an R2B configuration. The bonus gets you up to four units, but without any increase to height or setback, and has to stay inside the same building envelope as R2B. And we're asking staff to calibrate the FAR and impervious cover for feasibility. It may only be feasible with an affordable ADU, not a full-size unit. And we'll say, done some testing on this and indicates that what may be feasible is basing it on square footage and doing a ratio of, of affordable to market rate square footage, but that it's unlikely that a full-size unit works in this configuration. So this is just something that NHCD and other staff would need to take a look at and figure out what the appropriate way to calibrate it is.
Any comments by staff?
So I think in principle, we're not opposed. We have heard from our consultants that maybe this wouldn't, might not work as, as a feasible product. Maybe have to get more input from them.
Yeah, the initial testing that, that I'd seen was that on larger lots or corner lots, it was going to be feasible, but that on smaller interior lots, it might not be. And that as well, it may be only a product that works in more higher-priced areas so that the market square footage is worth that much more, so. But that's up to you guys. All right, the next one is a scalable version of R4. Create a units-per-acre version of R4 to be available, to be appropriately mapped, that should be past tense, on large lots at a later date. R4 has a units-per-acre standard on very large lots. We could see that same kind of configuration with the bonus saying on the height and the units to be useful in places. But R4 right now, you, you max out on a lot, so on larger lots, it doesn't work at all. You need to subdivide.
So I think the intent, we agree with, I don't know that we feel like we need a new R4 because we have other RM zones that are dwelling units per acre. So maybe the, you're not to it yet, but the next amendment is about that SF6 idea. I think we would agree with something like that, I don't know. I guess, thinking about it as an R4 is maybe a little bit confusing for us.
I think the biggest change would be that, in the next one, we're suggesting that you can maybe come down on impervious cover where SF5 and 6 are 55% under current code. They don't, maybe don't need to be in a, in a new version of the current code, but R4 would have a bonus, has maybe some.